Thank you, Rob. I'll call the meeting to order this morning, October twenty fourth, our committee of the whole meeting. Is there any declaration of interest related to any item on the committee of the whole agenda? Not seeing one, if one should arise, of course, you can declare it at any time. Business arising from minutes, we have a notice of motion from Councilor Gregg. We need to, is it on the screen or do we need to read it? Councilor Gregg, I presume you'd like to move that, that notice of motion? Thank you, is there a second here? There it is up on the screen, Councilor Eccles will second it, okay, Councilor Gregg, you should speak to it, please.
Thank you, Warden, and I will just quickly read it verbally. Whereas there is opportunity in the municipal act for a local municipality to appoint one of its members as an alternate member of the upper tier council if municipal requirement exists under section two sixty eight subsection one. And whereas electronic participation enhances the ability of councillors to attend virtually now therefore be it resolved that Gray County removed the per diem funding from the twenty twenty five budget for temporary replacements who have been appointed under section two sixty eight of the municipal act. I won't speak at great length on this because it's not like it's an eight hundred thousand dollar line item in the budget. However, it is still an expense item, it gets its own budget line. And over a term of council, it would equate to nearly twenty thousand dollars a taxpayer dollar. So if we are demonstrating that every dollar matters, I think this is a relevant conversation. As the, the motion explains, virtual attendance now opens up a wealth of opportunities for sitting members who are paid salary to be county councillors to be able to attend meetings remotely and therefore reducing the exposure of, of seats being empty or not filled. That's an opportunity that didn't perhaps exist to the same degree ten fifteen years ago, and we've certainly seen it change with COVID. We, when we sit here, have an expectation of being familiar with a breadth of historical and current county documents, everything from prior master plans to current strategic plans. And the type of documentation that's needed to inform the best decisions moving forward is, is very difficult just to be able to, to step in in an ad hoc function. And I would say we do not send temporary designates, designants to our local committees, to local fire boards, or to your arena board of management. Or if you sat on a church board of elders, you don't use substitutes yet. We have a policy here where we put a substitute in place for a board with a twenty three budget of approximately two hundred and twenty five million dollars. And I think north of two hundred and sixty five million in, in two thousand twenty four. You would not see the same done if you were a board member, unilever at PepsiCo, at GM, at Royal Bank. So what we're doing here, while it's a small line item, I don't think it, it is a necessary line item. Where the instance has occurred, essentially what's occurring is that seats being paid for twice by the taxpayer as it is. There's that per diem funding that goes to the temporary designate. And there has to be extensive vacancies before remuneration would be removed from a sitting councillor. So I don't think it's, it's in the best interest of the taxpayer to be potentially paying a second time for some meetings. There are instances which individuals could refer to where that participation is critical. But I would note that we are here with a commitment to do what is best for the county. And if ever an item existed, councillors have the virtual option to attend, to participate. And with the mutual respect and consideration of our peers, the ability to postpone a contentious item. We shouldn't put ourselves in a position where we are so fixated on protecting the lower tier, because it's not the mandate of which we're charged to execute here, it's, it's what's best for the county. So that's the rationale to it, like I say, it's, it's not a huge line item. But I think it is a line item that should be discussed by all of council, hence introducing it here and not doing it at the budget committee. So that there can be commentary, but I think technology allows us the opportunity currently to join virtually and participate in manners that didn't occur in the past and in the best interests of the taxpayer. We remove that secondary funding for the seats from the two thousand twenty five budget. And I would remind council, if the occasion ever occurs, and it has occurred in Gray County before where long-term illness or similar instances occur to a sitting member, the lower tier municipality has the ability under the municipal act to designate a new representative to county council. So that's, that's still, you know, that's the option that exists and protects the lower tiers at this table, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion, questions, Councilor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, just some points I'd like to raise is I have no idea how this affected our twenty twenty three budget. I don't think it's overly abused, and I don't say that as it being abused, except for as a tool to allow representatives who those that can't represent here. Certainly, we have a county hat, and I hope to come back to that, get that answer, I don't know. Great, if I get that, what twenty twenty three cost on that line item, is that, is that something we can get? I mean, the other option would be is ask for a report to come back on what that would be. You know, this is here today. But saying that, certainly, yeah, we wear a county hat, but we are a representative of those municipalities, the lower tier. Sometimes there are recorded votes that are necessary, and sometimes it is important to have people in the seats. Certainly, I will agree that electronic format that came out of COVID has allowed participants to attend if they're not physically allowed to be here, but there are times where you could be, you know, in circumstances that you can't be here, or you can't participate. And I don't think it has been overly a situation that, I know, I think from Gray Highlands, I think maybe our representative has been, will be here twice, I know I've missed two meetings. I'm not sure my deputy mayor, but I, I don't think it's a tool that's, that is there to, to bring those representation from the lower tier and, but I guess going back to you, Mr. Warden, do we have that number of what that effect was in twenty twenty three?
When she finds it. Any other discussion? Counselor, Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you through you, Mayor Gordon, my apologies. I suppose to Counselor McQueen's question, my, I was curious as to what the, what we would have spent of that budget in twenty thousand dollars over four years over a term is not significant in, in the grand scheme of things. The importance of, as Counselor McQueen indicated, of when there is a recorded vote and it's weighted or I suppose I would like to understand the process if we do not have appointed alternates. What the process would be and how long it would take to appoint an acting representative at the county should a medical leave of absence, a paternity leave, maternity leave, all of those things that are permitted under the act were to occur. So in experience, Southgate did have a long-term leave of absence and we were able to appoint, but the time it takes to do so. What we're proposing here is to eliminate the per diem, which means we're eliminating the alternate. I'm, I'm assuming, because there's no point in having one if they're not going to be compensated for being here. So those would be my questions, I echo the question about how much is it really in the grand scheme of things? And if this were to pass, I would suggest that it be that we consider removing the per diem through the budget process so that further reports may come back.
Thank you, Counselor DeBreen. So the total in twenty twenty three was twenty eight hundred and seventy one dollars. The total for the last four years is ninety three hundred and thirty eight dollars. Sure. Tara, you want it, she's going, Tara's going to provide some context and background on this, on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you, I'd just like to provide some kind of a high level overview that may help address some of your questions there. So the municipal act is the piece of legislation that gives the ability to appoint alternates. It's not a Gray County specific policy, it is provincial legislation that was brought into effect. So it does give the option for a local municipality to appoint one of its members as an alternate member of the upper tier council when a member is unable to attend a meeting for any reason. The appointment of alternates does rest solely at the municipal local table. And we facilitate their attendance at Gray County when requested by yourselves as the mayors and deputy mayors when your alternate is to attend county council. So there's no ability per se that I'm aware of where Gray County could veto those individual bylaws or resolutions that decision rests with your local council tables to appoint alternates each term. So I believe the intention of Counselor Gregg's motion is specific to alternates attending on a per meeting basis as opposed to those who are stepping in for a longer period of time. So I believe that would just be a case of passing a resolution or a bylaw, appointing someone to attend the upper tier meeting during an extended absence, so would depend on your kind of council schedules at the local municipal level. I would also just like to note as well that we do have at Gray County an alternate council member policy, and that's what provides for compensation to alternates. So if council would like to remove the funding of payment to alternates attending on a temporary per meeting basis, a change to that policy would be required to actually remove that from the policy. So an amendment, I would recommend an amendment be put forward to, to facilitate that if that's your wish.
Thank you, Chair, Barb, or Counselor DeBreen, sorry.
Here is her, thank you, Warden, just to follow up to that then. Oftentimes, an extended medical leave of absence isn't known how long that leave may be. And so you're in limbo at the lower tier and at the seat here until such time as that end date is known. So if you're waiting to appoint that individual, business is being conducted, and I mean, it carries on. I'm concerned that not having the option available to us, and certainly they deserve to be compensated if we do have. I guess my question is, is that it's up to the lower tier as to whether or not they want to appoint an alternate. They don't have to, and therefore the option is, is still there for other municipalities that do. I don't, ninety nine thousand three hundred and thirty eight dollars in the last four years. So that's two years plus the previous term of council, and yes, we have the ability to participate, but if you're really sick or, you know, you've got grandchildren or children that you're, or parents that we're watching, we should be focused on that and having someone to fill in and who is prepared to follow county council business. Our alternate is reading agendas and is trying to stay informed, so I think it's only fair that they be compensated.
Thank you. And to be clear, the resolution speaks about taking away the pay. We don't, we as county do not have the ability to prohibit alternates from attending, because that's up to the lower tier and it's provided for through legislation. So this, if I'm interpreting Counselor Gregg's motion correctly, it's solely about this body paying those alternates. There's no reason, there's no reason why lower tier couldn't pay the per diem, if, if they felt strongly about it. Yes, absolutely, please.
And just clarification, thank you to Counselor Gregg, the intention of your motion is that any extended alternate attendance for health reasons would still be continue on as normal, but it's only those individual kind of temporary per meeting basis that the motion is intended for. Thank you.
Counselor Body, please.
Thank you, Warden, Melon, I had some questions, but clerk, Ms. Waters really answered them. It's, it is just eliminating the money, so there is nothing that stops us from having our designated person coming. You know, potentially, we could buck up out of our own pockets for our own replacement, and I think that's sort of where Scott is going. I can remember, well, I remember, I think it was Norm? Norm Jack was a deputy mayor twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen that became ill, and that was an example, the example probably of replacing him, and, and there's a system that works if that happens. A lot of this, I think, comes back to, to be very blunt, there is a rumor spread or a statement made by a former member of this council that talked about specifically on sound using weighted votes to get something through. And, and the vote in particular he's talking about was eleven to seven, so all the weighted vote in the world didn't make a difference. What have we had? Four, five weighted votes this term in two years? We had even those? You know, that tends to be why we're worried about having somebody sitting in the seat if there's a weighted vote called or a recorded vote called, that we want to have somebody there to make sure that, that it counts, but we don't do it that often. Even when we have, I don't remember, and there might be one maybe in ten years that I've been kicking around here, where the weighted vote changed what the straight up vote did. Might have been one that it, that it moved it a little bit, but otherwise, that seemed to be the concern of why we want to have an extra person, and so I'm not sure that we need them. Again, with this motion, all we're doing is eliminating ten thousand dollars over four years. But we're not eliminating the physician, we're not eliminating somebody coming and think, think of Jim McManaman coming back from Toronto as a fireman to come to a council meeting and on sound and having to pay another captain to come in and take his, his role for him in, in Toronto, and he had to take it out of his pocket and did, and then, you know, we, we could always do that or look at the lower tier of paying it. So, so I'm probably looking a little bit like a circus freak, and I've got two heads at the moment on this and could go either way.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Counselor Cantner, and then Mattress House.
Thank you, Warden, I'd like to just look at the whole thing through a little different lens. This is Local Government Week, and I think we need to really think about the fact about how poorly understood the two-tier system is in our local system and amongst ratepayers. I remind you that I was here for five months as a councillor in Meaford during the long-term absence of Mayor Columbus. And it was like a window on this, you know, level of government that was very, very helpful and prepared me in many ways for what I'm doing now. And I think that the most important aspect of the delegate system is the the focus that it puts among first-tier representatives on the upper tier and, and what it does. So I think that for the money being saved here, I don't want to discourage anybody. It's too bad there aren't more people out behind us here really focused on what we're doing, because it is so critically important. So that's my input, thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Counselor Mattress House, please.
Thank you through you, the chair, I appreciate the extra information that's come from the clerk in terms of the municipal act actually allowing the decision of an alternate to be the lower tier. So my question through the chair is then, so if, if that is, if that is the will of the lower tier, and this is actually a resolution, a motion that's concerned about the compensation coming from the county, what about the training, the mandatory training that the alternates needed to go through? Because that was done through the county to make sure that they were fully aware of their, their role and responsibility when they're here. So then you would, if we remove compensation, we'd be expecting our lower tiers to pay for that training but still come up here for the training, because they couldn't do the training down at the lower tier, they need to have the training at the upper tier where they're going to fit the role.
Good question. Counselor Gregg?
And I think the, the tenor of the motion in removing the funding is really removing the temporary replacements from desiring it and freeing up the staff resources ultimately, which are expended on that, because, you know, at the end of the day, do I see, I'm measuring the value added to the corporation and I assess the amount of time and, and resources that go into it. And I measure that against someone that maybe joins virtually and says present. And I assess whether that's good value for money. Did we realize any real benefit from, from the policy that's in place and the funds that are expended on it, whether it's a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars? There's always those resources that can be redeployed in different ways, but ultimately, if we remove the funding, you're likely removing the temporary unless the lower tier municipalities make a commitment on an ad hoc, one-off basis at times that, that they're, you know, they really believe that they want to make sure that someone's in that chair and that it never sits vacant, but for the amount of times it sits vacant, I, I don't see that it's a significant concern to the lower tiers.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments, Counselor? All, Chair, I'd like to clarify something about the training.
Just to respond to your question, Counselor Mattress House, if we were to look at training with alternates next term, I think I would suggest instead of doing the kind of mass training that we did at the beginning of the last term, look at anyone who's attending to do that on a case-by-case basis, so we would still work to familiarize them with the county structure and the agenda, but on a, on an as limited basis, I guess, as opposed to a mass training each time.
Thank you, Chair. Counselor McQueen, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ward, good conversation. Three points, I think, from the policies, I recall, remembering of it. We pick one representative, but I don't think we can pick another one, I think we're, we're sort of governed to pick that one, that alternate person. But maybe that alternate person is somebody who's interested in county council, who is, has a desire or wants to fall off or is falling out. So I think that, that's a mechanism in itself, that somebody who is, is, is keen, I don't think you would want to appoint somebody that wasn't keen, and they'll tell you. I know in our choosing, we had an individual that had interest in it, but then changed his mind and another individual for the same cause. And has been very, and, and I know times I've missed have been here personally. The other part is health, so yes, we can, you know, if an individual is, is not feeling well or has, has issues, you know, knows that there's no alternate, may force themselves to be here either in person or in, or in Zoom to try to, you know, because I think all of us around the table are, we're here, we're here for a reason, we're here to, to represent the county of Gray and the municipality that puts us here. So I think, you know, we're, but, but if you're, you know, under health stress, and you know you don't have an alternate, it may put more stress on you, just because, you know, there's nobody depends on, on the issues. And I, I think to everybody, there has been more than one recorded vote issue, but there's, there's been a few that have shown up. Third part, I think, from a public's perspective. So obviously, it has changed from the Zoom part that if we can't physically be here as an individual, somebody can be physically here on Zoom. But if, you know, from a public's perspective, there is actually somebody missing from that municipality and it becomes more than one meeting, you know, there's a public perspective on that. Where's, who's representing that municipality? Who's representing, you know, who put you there? So I think that, that, that is, is a, you know, and I think I go back to, yes, referred in, in Southgate, and even Blue Mountains have had circumstances where they have had other alternates for similar reasons or different reasons, and I remember the one individual was, was very sick and tried to be here but couldn't be here, the alternate filled in and it worked very, very well. I think the compensation is, is, I do respect Counselor Gregg for bringing this forward in a sense of looking at dollars being spent, but I think dollars being spent here is dollars well spent in the sense of representation, and I think in, in a sense of having that alternate here. And ultimately, if it doesn't, if this passes, I guess it'll have to be up to the lower tier to determine that compensation, but if you want somebody here to be ready for a meeting, I think a compensation, what we pay is very small. To have somebody, and we want people being here, being prepared for the meeting, whether it's ourselves or the alternate. So I think that's something to be considered as well, so thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, morning, County Council. Interesting discussion, I, I can't say that I disagree with anything that Counselor Gregg said. Other members have made some, you know, very valid points, but, you know, as far as what the community expects, the community only voted for the mayor and deputy mayor knowing that they would be representative on Gray County. And then it's up to the local county or local council to decide who the alternative is, the public didn't get any say in that whatsoever. I'm not sure that every member that attends here is fully versed and up to date, I know some are. That is a concern, as was mentioned by Counselor Gregg, that if a person's sitting here and has that authority to vote, we need to make sure that they are well-versed. If there are municipalities that truly believe that they want that alternate representative, it's made clear that that is their, their ability, but I think they should be paying that tab and not, not the county. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That fails. Okay. Thank you very much, good discussion. We have no delegations, determination of items requiring separate discussion, anyone wish any of the consent items pulled for further direction? Counselor Body?
Thank you, Warden, Melon, could I have six A, the correspondence from Georgian College, pulled for further discussion, thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, could I have a motion to receive? For the, all, all the other items, save and except for six A. Counselor Carl, please, and Counselor Patterson. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Okay, we have items for direction and discussion. First one being results of collective bargaining between Gray Gables and Lee Manor and Obsoot Local two nine nine. Mover and seconder, please, for that item, Counselor Dickert and Counselor Pringle. Jen, you're going to be presenting the item. Welcome, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. I'm in front of you to let you know that we have reached a tentative agreement with Obsoot Lee Manor and Gray Gables. They are in the process, are unionized partners of voting on this tentative agreement from a period of it's about a week, it's the twenty fourth to the twenty ninth, so active voting is going on, and we have this agreement in front of you for your ratification of the results of our bargaining. The report is fairly simple, it lists the amount of money we're spending in each home in each year. Because our union partners are voting right now, the actual agreed to items will be presented enclosed and then bring forward, brought forward at a future meeting to have that publicly transparent, but for now, only financials are in front of you, and we'll deal with the rest enclosed. But I am happy to say that we are below our upset limit, just a little bit below. And we had a very successful bargaining process with our union partners. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, Jennifer is here as well, we're without our financial support, so hopefully you don't dig too deep into the numbers, but we're here to assist.
Thank you, Jen, are there any questions on the report? We will go into set, in closed session to discuss the actual agreement. Okay, not seeing any. I have a motion here, Committee of the Whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two, three, nine, subsection two of municipal act two thousand and one, is amended to discuss labor relations or employee negotiations, specifically collective bargaining at Gray Gables, Lee Manor and Obsoot Local two nine nine. Someone care to move that, please? Counselor Nielsen and Counselor Mackey. All those in favor? That is carried. We will just, I don't know who else is going to stay. I don't know who else is going to stay. I know who's leaving. Or at least two of them anyway. Thank you, Rob. We are now back in open session and I can, uh, confirm that we only discussed that item that was on the closed meeting agenda. So we're back to open session. As I said, the motion, uh, that is on the floor currently is related to collective bargaining between Gray Gables, Lee Manor. Perhaps I'll read it just so everyone is clear that report H R R C W dash zero, four, two, four regarding the results of collective bargaining between Gray Gables, Lee Manor and Obsoot Local 299 be received. And that Gray County Council ratify and approve the recommendations of the bargaining team between Gray County and Obsoot Local 299 to bind the new collective agreements and that the warden and clerk be authorized to sign and bind the new collective agreements as ratified ahead of council approval as per section two, six point six B of the procedural, procedural bylaw and the county council authorized staff to make the necessary amendments to rates of pay, benefits and other issues identified as agreed changes. So that motion has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Counselor Mackey? I think it's already been moved and seconded, so it has. Okay, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. So we're back to six A, the consent item. Counselor Body.
Thank you, Warden Mellon. I, uh, pulled six A in our consent agenda. It was a letter from the president and chief executive officer of, uh, Georgian College, Kevin Weaver, and it refers to, uh, decisions made by the, um, Immigration Refugee and Citizenship Canada. As we know, there is, uh, limits put on, uh, accepting, um, uh, people from outside the country, uh, into Canada. And they announced, uh, in January that, that they wanted to reduce the number of people coming in. Um, September 18th, they announced expansive measures to reduce the number of temporary residents, particularly international students eligible to enter Canada. This has, uh, affected Georgian College. They're down approximately 1,000 international students, uh, this fall. Uh, and well below the, uh, new caps that, uh, were introduced. The, um, Immigration Refugee and Citizenship Canada have want to identify needs within the country to fill those, uh, roles as they allow students to come in. However, they're not necessarily looking at local needs, uh, in, in our economy and our region. The recommendation, uh, that was on, it was just to receive the letter. I'd, uh, like to move that, uh, we direct our, our warden to write a letter of support as was requested. Now maybe go to that paragraph. Uh, we seek your support to demonstrate the critical need for the, uh, IRCC to align postgraduate work permits eligibility with local labor markets. Recognizing the individual needs of communities across Canada and the immense value of our communities, uh, realized from our continued partnership. So I, I ask, uh, would move that we direct, uh, the warden to write a letter of support in, in those terms, uh, with the request that the, uh, letter be sent to the Minister of Immigration, Refugee and Citizenship Canada, our local MP, uh, Alex Ruff. And, um, uh, again, Kevin Weaver, the president.
Thank you, sir. And Counselor DeBreen has indicated she will second that. Any discussion, questions? Counselor Mattress House.
Thank you through you, the warden. Could I please also request that that correspondence go to both of our MPs so that it goes to MP Terry Delville as well? Thank you.
And might I suggest that it go to the provincial MPPs in the province as well? Okay, thank you. Counselor Greg?
Well, it's a pretty broad topic. I mean, where do you start? Like really and truly, um, it'd be easy just to support this, but there are so many other components to it. And we talk about the impact on healthcare currently. I think we have one of the best local, um, healthcare systems in terms of being able to get in and, and get treatment. And still you hear stories of six, eight, 10 hours or more in ERs. The last few years have demonstrated significant housing challenges and shortages and increases in rents. Uh, and this is not just for students traveling international, but this is for people who live here, who have been born here, who are, who have spent their lives in the communities and, and are struggling with affordability as, as rates rise because of demand. I think it's acknowledged now. It was certainly acknowledged yesterday. Again, the troubles and trying to re-project the type of immigration levels that this country can safely absorb. Uh, I'd like to learn more, but the topic than just to vote on it in support right now. Um, I think the, the impacts are, are more significant in, in terms of how the enrollments have impacted all communities, whether it's just Georgian College or Windsor St. Clair College was probably one, one of the most renowned colleges for international students flooding the community and its impacts subsequent to that and concerns. And they're all, and there are many valid concerns. Um, the colleges are a business. At the end of the day, they are a business. And there is an onus to respond to just the capital markets. You know, try to meet the demand that the capital markets have there. And, and if there's only so many resources available, then wages should increase and flow to higher levels in terms of the labor supply to support certain industries. And I think colleges and universities have to respond to that. Um, I'm a little concerned with where we've been, where we have been the last several years now in terms of the overall um, enrollments and the impacts in communities. So I would be more comfortable with a couple of weeks. I, the last line is, um, um, an open invite to the president to come in and perhaps speak to council. I would, uh, certainly, uh, be fond of that, uh, but I think more time should be given to council considering such requests and considering the impacts overall on what's occurred in the communities and, um, what type of contribution, uh, this enrollment, uh, the enrollment numbers of the past several years have had in the communities. Um, and there's a multitude of, of impacts.
Kim, you'd like to speak to that?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And, um, through you. In, in many ways, Counselor Greg, I think that, um, what you're saying actually aligns with what President Weaver is suggesting in this correspondence in that, um, Georgian, in maybe a way that's somewhat unique in the province, has worked really hard to align their course offerings and their international student recruitment to the specific needs of our job market. They are not at that, I, I have ever had information to suggest bringing students here to Owen Sound for the sake of bringing them. And I think that graduation numbers and the, or the, not the graduation numbers, the employment numbers that they're seeing post-graduation would support that, that they've paid close attention to what programs they should be offering and ensuring that the people that come here are successful and are fulfilling a need in our communities. Savannah, you might have some more.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, I would agree with what Kim's saying. We know that right across the province, it's definitely not painted equally, but what we've seen with Georgian and the work that we've done with them over the last several years. In 2022, we co-funded an international student coordinator position with Georgian College and they've carried that on through today and intend to carry that forward because they want to see their students successful. And all of the programs have been aligned to power engineering to support nuclear and marine because we have a huge opportunity here and a massive shortage in Canada, uh, for marine. And we also have nu- or sorry, not nuclear, I already said that, but nursing and ECE. So those are the other two areas where they have very specifically attracted international students. And right now there's about a hundred international students on campus in Owen Sound. That number could grow. We need it to grow, uh, when we look at our demographics and where things are going. If we are not attracting people in and especially students who have the opportunity to train and they're also working 20 hours a week while they're here. So that's part of the study permit that they are required to work 20 hours, no more, no less, off campus in the communities. Um, so when we look at international students, there's a huge potential here and we're certainly concerned about what we're seeing in the media. We're waiting for the federal government to formally announce all the numbers. They haven't actually done that yet. So we are waiting, but I think what you know, the president is offering here to be able to come and speak. I know him and Dave were very, uh, willing to do that, to be able to have the conversation with council about what we're seeing, what we're worried about and what we'd like to plan for in the future.
Thank you, Savannah. Uh, Counselor Greg, follow up?
Well, I'd just like to say I appreciate both, uh, responses from staff. Um, I guess my general concern would be if every president of a college was, you know, extending such correspondence back to every municipality and every municipality just says, yeah, we fully support the documentation in front of us, then we say, how are we part of finding the solutions to the problems that are right in front of us right now? So that's my concern for expressed was just, uh, would, if this was just a uniform type of response from all colleges, but if it is specific here, then, then I'm, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you through you, Warden. I appreciate the fact that this is, um, a request to take a local lens to understand our needs here locally. Uh, and would it be a requirement to include a clause that invites the president to delegate to? As it has been mentioned that he's willing to come and speak to council? Does, is that a requirement in the resolution or is, is? Can it just be?
I think, uh, or I know that, uh, they are scheduled to come in the near future on another topic. So certainly this could be a point of discussion at that time as well. So I, I don't think it's necessary to include it. Counselor Body, I see your hand up.
Yeah, if I just may, uh, follow up, uh, a number of us were at a session a year, year and a half ago, two years ago, Walker and the, uh, Nuclear Innovation Institute put on and the professor from Brock, I believe was, um, maybe his name is Brock Dickinson? I can't think of the first name who was a, um, looking at demographics and he was talking about, um, uh, how the world population is, uh, slowing down and in Canada and North America and Western worlds, we need labor. We're not having, not having the same number of kids we did. And talked about how Canada is a leader in immigration and bringing in educated, uh, immigrants that support our economy. We have to do that. Where the, uh, where the pushback is, is, uh, in the last few years, there's maybe been a, just a general immigration, uh, of, um, cer- certain in the political argument would argue that it's just been a wide open immigration policy and, uh, I, I, I don't know enough to actually give an opinion on that, but if you're bringing in, uh, kids that want to be educated and want to have jobs, um, that education piece is a big part of what we need for our labor and for our economy. I would hope that every president of every education institute across this country is writing the same letters to their municipalities, uh, for support. Educated immigrants, we need. Uh, we need immigration. We have to have immigration. There's no doubt about it. There has to be some, some framework put into that, but there, un- under the, uh, under the terms of, um, of temporary residents, we, we know there's issues of temporary residents that are coming in and working and maybe taking jobs and different things. These are people that are coming to seek education and to be, uh, become educated, uh, employees. And I think that's a little bit different under that, uh, umbrella of, of straight, um, temporary immigration, but I think, I think it's important. It's important for Georgian College. Uh, it's important for our economy in this area and, um, I, I don't think we need other studies and frankly, I, I don't think that we need to hear from the president in order to send a letter of, of support in, in this, uh, from my point of view in this, uh, situation. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Counselor Eccles?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden. The complexities of this strain my small mathematical mind for sure, Mr. Warden. You know, we have a housing problem here. Uh, I think we've just passed something about Georgian College building more housing for these types of immigrant, uh, immigrants that are coming in. You, you know, locally. A few years ago, there was, uh, another issue around student immigration. Um, and Georgian College was kind of at the center of that one where there was a quota on immigrants, uh, inter- international students coming to Canada, coming to Ontario. I'm just wondering whether anybody has any update on how that was resolved at the time. Georgian College ended up with uh, a number of students that applied here. But within the first months, then would transfer to a college in the urban centers. I'm a little bit, but that was what was going on at that point in time. It, I, 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 I understand and I, I support Georgian College. Yeah, having these, having these students come here. You know, immigrating, being educated. It, it's wonderful, but it's all the other little things that I'm not really seeing here or have not been made aware of, of what can happen going into the future with this many. How does it impact? Uh, what is going to be the overall impact? And I can see Savannah wanting to punch the microphone there and give me some update on that, uh, problem that happened. It was a number of years ago. I realize that.
Savannah, please.
Thank you through you, Mr. Warden. Um, you are correct. I mean, in the past, there were a lot of issues around international students coming to the community and not having the supports that they needed in place. And I know there was a session, I think Mayor Body, you were at it, listening to the experiences of international students and it wasn't positive. It wasn't what Georgian wanted to be putting forward. It wasn't what Gray County or any of the partners or municipalities wanted to be seeing. And that's when we made that co-investment in the International Student Coordinator. So when every student comes here, they have one point of contact that is dedicated to making sure that they are finding their way in community, that they're finding appropriate housing, that they are finding, uh, the job that they're looking for, that they're well connected. They have a community being built around them and that has been a game changer um, for the success that we've seen here. So you're right. We used to have students come here and it was a shell shock and they would think, wow, this is not, not what I was expecting, not what I was looking forward to. It's not like that anymore. People who are coming here, they are committed. They are staying here. They're getting their education and then they're working. Um, so we know that that shift has really made a difference and that's part of that made in gray approach that we talked about. Um, and why that co-investment was made and Georgian continues to carry that on. So we are no longer paying for it. We only paid for it that very first year to see if it would work and it has been very successful. And I think that that's something that maybe when Kevin and Dave are talking about what Georgian is doing, how it's been doing things differently, can really speak to some of those, um, instances and the outcomes that, that we're seeing and how that is definitely different here and why we don't want to be painted with the same brush that we're seeing right across Ontario. But I don't anticipate that we're looking locally at adding hundreds and hundreds of international students. We can absolutely see more here. And we'd like the ability to do that. And I think that's where the concern is coming from, that depending on what the numbers come down from the province, that ability to grow or even to maintain where we are may not be an option anymore. So that's part of the work that we'd like to be able to continue working on with Georgian over the next while.
Thank you, Savannah. Okay, good discussion. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, oh, Counselor McQueen and then Counselor Mackey.
I, I was just going to move a motion to defer this till we had a chance to hear from the president of the Georgian College, uh, Kevin, Kevin Weaver. I'll put that motion on the floor to defer this till we have that opportunity.
Your secondar? Counselor Greg, discussion? Call the question on depriming. All those in favor? Opposed? That fails. So we're back to the original motion. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Any other business? Any notice of motion? I need a motion to adjourn. Counselor Dub- DeBreen and Counselor Nielsen. All of us in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. That is carried. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.